What'd you do to the color?
Oh, isn't that cool? I don't know.
So, seeing the forum, I will call the meeting to order. It is seven oh two. Do we have any public comment that's not related to the purchase of a van or the River Road closure?
Yeah, I will go scrap downtown line on the comment. The only comment I would make at this point, having been here for 200 years, is I would suggest if you have on here the public who's invited, which is welcome, is that I would think that you would go like and use a listserv and other items to let people in town who are paying your fares, who are paying the taxes, know what's going on. A couple of times I've, the events have been here at the school over the years, that the parents and the teachers and all that know everything. But the taxpayers who are not teachers or parents, kids, have no idea what's going on. And if you want to support the taxpayers, which I think is important for you, then I would think that more publicity and more openness would be appreciated. Comment for the night?
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Our item three, our agenda review, so I'm going to move to suspend the rules and take up item six A, the River Road bus, as item number four. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any objection? Okay. All right, so here is the situation we find ourselves in. Several months ago, actually, Chris, I think you were at the meeting, we've been, we've set a new practice, if you will, where we're meeting, we get together with the select board to kind of duck about what's going on in town, what's going on in the school, sharing that information. And at one of our summer meetings, I think it was probably in June, one of the things I said I'd like to bring up to the budget committee is a conversation around what we want to do long-term about the fact that we've been leasing a bus. So I just want to step back and give some background to that so that we are all on the same page. So I think it was probably about three years ago, soon you might be able to help out with the exact date, but when the River Road was originally being closed, at that time, we looked into, okay, with River close being closed where it is, what could we do in terms of transportation? And at that time, the outlook was kind of like, oh, it's six to eight months that we probably would have to deal with this. And so we contacted, the bus company is obviously where we started. Bus company gave us a bid of about $35,000 to run a route just to that portion. So we said, well, that doesn't sound like a good plan. So then we started to look at people movers, we started to look at a number of different places about renting or leasing a van. We found a company, we found one company that would lease us a van, and we leased that van. That van was leased for $600 a month, which we were like, all right, well, this is our only option, it's going to be six to eight months, we're going to have to swallow it. Well, it turned out that it took, it's taken a little bit longer to do the River Road, and three years later, we're still in that same situation. And so at the last board meeting, what, so last board meeting, what I asked to have a conversation about is, all right, so we're in this plan for leasing at $600 a month. And I was not wild about it when we had to do it with a short-term plan. Now that it's a long-term plan, I was like, we've got to be thinking about this and be like, all right, is this the best way that we want to approach the issue? And so I emailed Dick a little while ago and said, hey, Dick, can we get on our next committee to have this conversation about what we're going to do? Well, in the time that I sent that email and where we are today, a couple of things have changed. One is, the bus company or the company that we could, we're able to find that would lease us a van, the van that we leased, they said they will not lease anywhere because it's not roadworthy. They'd be happy to lease us a van, we'd have to enter in for a year agreement, and the lease is going to be $1,600 a month. And I was like, well, it didn't make sense at $600 a month, so we're going to start looking around for another solution. This is about a week and a half, two weeks ago. We have then heard that the River Road is likely not to be done much before the, what is it now?
October 1.
October 1. And then there might be something at Hughes Brook?
That, yeah.
Something? And there might, there might be, there might be something up towards Baker Hill, maybe?
Baker Hill, he thinks you can get, they could be able to get the bus through early in the morning and in the afternoon.
Okay, good.
They can make arrangements to get the bus through.
So, in any case, we've got some time that we're going to be in this situation. We reached out to a number of different companies, again, to the bus company. The bus company said, even if we were, even if you were willing to pay $30,000 for us to do it, we don't have a van, we don't have a small bus, and we don't have a driver, so we can't do it. We contacted a number of different dealerships to see if we could do a lease of a van, and they said, yeah, sure, $1,800 a month. Okay? And so we contacted a rental company, see if we could rent it. It's $200 or $178 a day, which has even turned out to be more. And even in that, they said, they now contacted, they couldn't lease us a 10-passenger van, they could only lease us a minivan because of some federal rule that they have about transporting students in a rented vehicle. So we have, we have, we have a situation where it comes down to, all right, so, you know, we are required by law to transport students. We went, the last time we were at this, we even offered to pay somebody to transport in their private vehicle. We didn't have any takers, but then also our insurance company said, eh, we don't really love that either, but we're trying to find solutions. But I think really what we're here to do tonight is to say, all right, let's think about this, and this is why I think it's important that the budget committee is involved, because we want to be thinking about these things strategically and long-term. So in my mind, it's not about the road projects that we know about, it's the road projects we don't know about that are going to pop up, and how we would like to handle them moving forward. I, I don't love the idea of being a vehicle owner, I don't love the idea of having to find somebody to drive that vehicle, but we are in a situation where, you know, road closures may be something that we see, and I don't know the frequency, but I can certainly tell you what the cost is. And so we, we are here to talk about, you know, the fact that we have these several variable nodes, and I'm going to share them with you, and then we can have a conversation. We know the costs of leasing, we have to commit to about a year at a time, and the cost is anywhere from about $1,200 to $1,800 a month. We have bids for a new vehicle, we searched for used vehicles, and what we have, we have bids that basically are around for a 10-passenger vehicle with a, you know, aisle down the middle. So the Egress is about $36, $36.076 and $36.970. So just about, a little bit over 30, between $36,000 and $37,000. We have earmarked, that we have grant money that we can use to apply to this, that we'll pay for about two-thirds of it, but it would mean that we'd be taking about $11,000 and change out of operational costs. That means they're going to come out of a line somewhere in the budget. As you know, we can't go over our budget, and we also can't lease a vehicle before March because in order to lease a vehicle that has a multi-year payment plan or to take out a loan requires a vote of the town, which happens in March, and school starts on Wednesday. So, that's the background information. It's a, it's not a, it's not a situation where I'm cherishing the rock on this side and the hard place on this side, but again, in an air of working together and coming up with solutions or at least understanding the issues that we face, we're bringing it to this forum.
What is the line for passing buses?
What is the line?
You know, budget line?
How much is it?
Yeah. And is, and have we, is it fully allocated already?
Oh, yeah.
So there was no money in for?
I don't remember what the exact solution was.
We paid them $6,000 a year.
The question is, how is that form as an alternative to this? Because once you get a van and then you have to pay a driver, the $37,000 is not the only expense.
Yep. So most likely what we, so it's absolutely, that's absolutely true. I mean, there's going to be added, only a vehicle means that there's added expenses to it, there's a.
Insurance, among others.
Sure, yep. Yep. Our difficulty with the, with paying a family to do it is that if we were to do that, we'd have to offer that to all of the families that were on the route that was affected. In the case of this one particular family that we've done in the past, we were fortunate that there was only one person on that length of the, of the route. And I think you can remember the year that we finally got out from under that, we all were like, woo-hoo! We kind of did a dance. Because it was a hard thing to swallow. We, we did approach it, we did approach families when we were first looking at this, and we did not have luck, which is why we wound up with renting the van for $600.
I have one question about it being a 10-passenger vehicle. So this 10-passenger vehicle would work to solve the River Road problem, but would you perceive the possibility that 10-passenger vehicle would be big enough for a River Road problem? And then we own a vehicle and still have the same problem?
Yep. So, it's a very good question. So one of the reasons why we went the route of pursuing like a 10-passenger vehicle versus like a minivan, which is what we had before, is that capacity. As soon as we get much past 10 passengers, two things happen. One is the cost, the vehicle goes much higher because it goes from a mid-size to a, so there's standard, mid-size, and extended. Once you get into extended, you're talking about a double axle, and you're talking about a longer vehicle, and the prices go from 30 up to like 60s. So what we were figuring is, okay, so what is a sized vehicle that would become efficient, not only in, because I don't think we should be purchasing if we think that this problem will suddenly go away. If we think that suddenly all roads will be open forever, we'll never have need for any other vehicles, I don't know what we're going to do this year. I honestly don't know what we're going to do, but I'm thinking that this is, we should also be thinking about this as a way to say, okay, if this situation comes up again, we're not going to be stuck in a situation where paying $600 a month to rent a vehicle that we lose. We're investing this year in a longer-term solution. That to me would be one reason, big reason, why we would decide to do something like this. Again, not that we want to become, you know, vehicle owners, but we want to be in a situation where if the, if the roads are closed, we aren't hamstrung, and we're not paying out as a town, you know, $600 seemed expensive a few months ago, now it's cheap. Now if somebody came to me and said, hey, we'll rent you a van for $600, I would jump on it, and I hated it, you know, several months ago. So we have to figure out, okay, is it going to solve that problem? I don't know, because I don't know what road is going to close, but it will allow us to have a capacity of 10 that if for some reason we had to do, you know, had to do it in two runs, we could. Especially if they're short runs, which is what a van would have to be. So I, I can't tell you other than there's capacity for 10, and we'll hope that the road dogs are favorable, which I'm not a big fan of either. I don't like the road dogs. They're not our friends.
I guess another question. So if the school purchases this vehicle, I have no idea what town would use a 10-passenger vehicle for, but if you purchase a vehicle and even use grant money from the state in part, could the town utilize that vehicle, say, between a E3 PM, to do something else with, should the opportunity arise?
So one of the things we are looking at is, you know, can this serve multiple purposes? And so because we don't have, you know, other school vehicles, we could use it for, we can take the seats out and be able to move some of the things we have in different storage places around town, we can use it for that. We can use it for transporting on small field trips and things like that. Because I, what I would hope, what I'd hope, and the idea of the town using it, I think, you know, unless there's obstacles to do that, that's, that would be wonderful, because the more use we could get out of it, I think the better it is. The more problems it solves, the better it is. The town wants to buy it and let us use it, that would be great. Town wants, anyone here, you want to buy a van and let us use it?
Not right today.
Okay. That would be a great solution. So, yeah, I mean, the last thing we want is a capital sitting idle. Chris, you have a question?
It was only asking.
Other thoughts, questions, advice? Anyone want to take this problem on for themselves?
Another potential use might be to do some transport for the summer camp program. Some of the kids might not be able to get bikes to the camp, but maybe it does another use for the van in the summer, since it doesn't require special licensure. I know, it's just an idea.
Yep. It does, if, we do have to have people that go through like a licensed background, like the license pack and stuff like that.
Maybe those workers could do that, you know? I mean, my kids all have to do that for camp, if I do.
Again, I think that if we can find.
I was just thinking, give another use.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I was thinking, what about, what about, you know, letting CCL or the parish nurses use it to transport people to the DHMC?
That's what I was thinking. Because there, there is a problem, I don't know how much the town is really sensitive to, but there, there is a problem where people have a hard time in line finding transportation to get down to the road or wherever it is for their appointments. I don't know, I don't want to get, sort of like completing two arguments, I don't know that that, that this van would be a realistic solution to those problems. I don't know that there would be a fee that anyone would pay to use the van, so would that offset the cost? I don't know, but, but it's sort of an idea, it's an idea that kind of in the back of my head.
Well, and there would, there would be questions, and maybe, you know, I think these things are really good and we should investigate them, but.
It doesn't help the question.
Well, I don't know, I think it does, but I don't think they're promising, because what I've found about true like common sense sometimes doesn't play out well in public bureaucracies, and so there's probably some bureaucrats saying, oh, you know, the town can't use this vehicle because the insurance is held by somebody with the last name of Q and X is Y and something, but if we can work around any of those obstacles, that would be great. We only needed to pick kids up and drop them off, and then those occasions when we can use it to avoid renting a bus.
Where are you first meeting?
So the van is purchased tomorrow, who's driving it Wednesday?
Probably short-term, it would be somebody from buildings and grounds. And then the only problem comes when winter comes, and they're clearing snow and stuff like that at the time when the bus routes are, are, and we, you know, avoid paying overtime. Overtime, you know, we do everything to avoid having to do overtime, so.
Could be a current employee?
Yeah. That's, that would be like when we, before we were told that, when we were able to rent the van for the first few days of school, and then we were told we weren't, the plan was that we were going to have somebody from building grounds do it. Last year, we did have somebody in town that was willing to do it, and, you know, we paid them to do it. That was mostly during the winter when, when the guys were usually clearing snow early in the morning. But typically, we tried to use our staff, very distant staff. Nikki, did you have some people?
Just, I think I came in, like, you mentioned that personally $11,000 would be coming out of the operating budget for the school. Any ideal where that would be?
Well, I would say that we have some places we think we're going to take it, but right now, you know, it's probably not anything we'd be talking about right now because we don't, we don't want to move anything with the presumption that we take something from this line as opposed to this line. What we know is, we got, wherever, whatever we have spent out of operations, we have to take out of what we raised through taxes, which means it's coming out of something. Something we can't do.
But six of the 11 is in the budget.
Six of the 11 would have been for the.
You missed that.
For the rent of the van.
Is five thousand your number that you're searching for?
So 5,000, which, you know, when you get right down with, that is a much easier number to swallow than 30, whatever. But, you know, what we have to, you know, I really want us to understand that what we're talking about is, is an asset that we would have. I don't need an asset to a thing. We would have, we would suddenly become vehicle owners. Right? And so to become vehicle owners, as a community, we have to say, well, we're becoming a vehicle owner because we anticipate that this is an issue that this vehicle would solve over the next few years. I don't want to be, as I said at the select meeting, I don't want to look back three years from now and say, man, we should have bought that vehicle because we thought that, you know, $1,200 was less than the 36, and we only thought we had to do it for a year. And then a year from now, there's another road, and, you know, whatever there is, I just don't, I fundamentally get really kind of bunched up when I think that we're renting, we rented a vehicle for $600 a month with this presumption it was going to be a year, and we're, we are, we have been still paying that $600 a month almost three, or a little bit more than three years later. We would have been better off then buying a vehicle. Yes?
Can you propose to take cash or finance this vehicle?
We have to do cash.
Can you propose to own this vehicle for 10 years?
Until the wheels fall off.
So would you buy an extended warranty or anything associated with that?
Right now, that is not in the bid. Right now, what's in the bid is the cost, the, and I pitted, and I wish I could buy a vehicle like this for myself, maybe next time I will, but I basically pitted all the different dealerships and saying, look, you know, this is going to come from the town, and if there's somebody in the audience that they can get it for a buck fifty lower, you know, it's A, you're not going to get the bid, and B, you're probably not going to get the sale even if anyone does. So they, they were really good about it. And everything that I've been able to do in terms of research on the value of these vehicles, you know, the price we're getting is very good, and it's stripped out, which helps, I suppose.
Do you have a sense of the carrying cost of the vehicle, you know, for the service, the insurance, the, you know, like, so we're going to invest that, what's it going to add to sort of the annual budget line to take care of that asset?
I asked, I asked them what, you know, at the, the dealerships, like, what is the maintenance cost or something like this? And they all shared, oh, man, these can go for 250,000 miles without needing to change the gas. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right.
So I'd hate to give a number and have people presume that that was the reality. I think there's going to be a carrying cost. There's going to be insurance. We anticipate probably, you know, somewhere between $500 and $800 maybe, a year.
More than that for insurance.
For what?
More than that for insurance.
Well, it would be a rider.
It's going to be on top of the other.
Yeah. So we, we, as a school, have to carry a lot of insurance.
Yeah.
So this, this isn't going to be like what you and I would pay for insurance.
So it's not, it's not a heavy, your anticipation.
So, I'd love to hear somebody come up with a golden solution that costs nothing. They had a bus driver, and we didn't have to become a vehicle owner. Anybody got any of that? Chris?
I don't know if the town wants it.
Town what?
The magic? Yeah, we love the magic.
The magic, yeah, you, I mean, the van, right?
After the year is over.
No, just the ownership.
The town buy it now and let the school.
If the school's going to use it three hours a day.
Right.
Can the town leverage the other?
Don't know. Have not considered that.
So, in terms of playing devil's advocate, of using a minivan, as you mentioned, the reasoning behind doing a 10-person versus a typical minivan, usually carries five, wouldn't be able to do five or six kids probably, is that, would that be cheaper? I understand the reasoning that, do you, like, more or less, are there many roads that you would really need that many kids to fit into versus?
Right. So I think it's a, it's a trade-off between.
It's a risk.
Well, it, there's two, there's a, there's a couple things. One is, everything that I've been able to do in researching these mini vans is, the vans we're looking at are built on commercial chassis as opposed to passenger car chassis, so their durability is better, and they're, so they're fleet vehicles, so they're supposed to be longer-lasting and all of this. The other piece is that it, the tent hedges that, that situation where the closure, it's nine kids as opposed to five kids. And so just increasing the size of it before you can get absorbed in, in terms of it becoming a 12-passenger or 15-passenger and then the CDL requirements, you know, my logic was, the, as long as we can get that's durable, that has longevity, that would be able to handle the hills that we have and stuff like that, is where we move from like just a passenger vehicle that's a minivan and this other. And then the other piece is that, you know, if, if a, if a minivan turns over, you've got, you know, a third or fourth row back, they have to get through the first two rows to get out, whereas these are built so that there's a center egress and the height of the van such that, you know, you can stand up. They're mid-height, they're not the tall ones, but the mid ones.
Carrying along with that, I guess, I wonder if using a minivan, are you going to run into a child restraint issue? Right, like the kindergarten or camp? I, I don't know. Kindergartners apparently can ride buses without child restraints. I'm assuming they can ride in a 10-passenger commercial vehicle, because what if it did, I don't know, roll over, did, I don't know, does it have seatbelts, maybe it will roll over the leg because it's less. But a passenger minivan, I mean, I can't, I couldn't legally ride in a minivan with my daughter without her in a restraint system, you know, so I just, I'm not sure, maybe that would be a better reason not to go in the direction of the minivan because it'd be just extra complication. I don't know about these 10-passenger vehicles either, maybe we're just rolling the dice every time we put kids in them, I don't, you know.
Last year, um, on the roof, we probably gonna have about the same, maybe one or two, or more. Again, you know, the hard part is, who moves in and where do they live?
So that definitely answers the question of why ten and not a minivan, because then again, there's enough chance of doing six, six or best. Six would be best.
I hadn't owned a minivan in a long time, I just remember when I did, we stuffed kids all over the place, of course, that was. I remember riding the backseat of a station wagon on that little, that little shelf in the back.
It's amazing we're all still alive, if you look at the rules today.
Now, the grant that we have is not allocated through anything else. But it means it can't be allocated.
Right, do we need it? Do you want me to believe us?
We have, we, we have to spend, uh, seven thousand and, seven thousand eight hundred and, seven thousand eight hundred and something before September fifteenth anyways, so this would be a good way to spend that.
We need fifty-six, we have to, we have to allocate it by September thirtieth and spend it out by September.
Okay, yeah.
We lose that seven thousand.
Other, other thoughts, questions?
Can you take anything from the public at this point?
Well, yes, please.
How many times, and maybe Sue can help us, how many times in the past, um, ten years, have we had this problem?
The roads being closed?
Yeah.
Let's see, we had, we had River Road, we had, um, we had one up towards Goose Pond or Baker Hill or something up in that way years back.
And then you had Rondos.
Yeah, we had the Rondos, that Ro, yeah, the Rondos was quite some time. That was for probably nine years, a Rondo, about nine years.
Well, I guess I just caution against rationalizing, uh, that kind of an issue and having that become a paramount thing about worrying about, worrying about things that may happen.
Just, you know, that, you know, Earl, that's, it's, it's a really good point, and it's also, you know, that balance between, do we not worry about it as a whole problem, or do we think strategically and we say, what's the probability these things happen? So that we're not, um, we're not looking in retrospect and saying, well, why three years ago didn't you do X? It would've been this much less now. Um, I, I don't have an answer to that. I mean, we could, we could, we can rule of justice, we can say, you know what, we think River Road is, is, we're gonna fix it and it's never gonna close again. Uh, and we, we think that the culverts, um, aren't gonna be a problem, and, and we could be, we could be great. And we still have to get through this year. And so this year, if, if we decide not to go this route, the route we're gonna have to go is leasing one for a year with a year commitment for twelve, sixteen? For how much?
Nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
Nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars, and we'll have nothing to show for it at the end. Yeah.
Uh, I'm Greg Blackman, I'm on the, uh, Budget Committee. So the options so far are leasing it for almost twenty thousand a year. Buying one for thirty-seven thousand a year.
Yes.
So can you assume that we would own this, the town would own this for five years?
I would hope to think a lot of the time.
You would think so.
Yeah.
So five times twenty is, I don't know, it seems, thinking along those lines, it seems pretty straightforward on those two options.
Okay, we need it.
Well, or we can find, use for it.
If it just sits, you have very expensive like.
Well, you could sell it, I mean, we could, if we get to a situation where all of it is magically fixed, you could sell it. It sounds like there aren't very many available, so maybe we'll have. Sell it, yeah, if it used one is selling for thirty. I was curious then.
Yeah, we can just. But I mean, Greg, Greg, Greg's point is, is a very valid, I mean, if you, you advertise this, if you look at it like, you know, if we had looked at this same problem three years ago, would we be paying six hundred dollars, would we have chosen the six hundred dollars a month rental? But I didn't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go into this again without having this conversation.
And how many families, you said approximately right now, there are eight children, but how many families that were, how many?
Four.
So it'd depend, um, let's start at the number six thousand, that would be twenty-four thousand dollars. So that's what you did, you compensated the family with six thousand.
Yeah, I have no idea if the state would let us do that now, but at one time, that was okay.
Put that six upside down. That's twelve thousand dollars a day, isn't it?
Do you know how many other children cannot take the bus because of road restrictions in town?
Mine? Yes. Do you have any on your, on your stretch, you're on the other side of River Road.
Yeah, River Road North, um, so my two children and another family that's moving into North River Road, uh, River Road North, they're, they're three children, so there's five.
And there's one more on that.
And there's one more pass, I think they, right now, can technically ride the bus route that goes north, so the bus can go to the end of North Ethford and turn around, but, yeah.
It seems like there's demand for this.
What is the rule regarding the distance from a bus stop?
From a bus stop.
One.
Oh, you're right. One mile from a bus stop, two miles, you have to be within a two-mile, uh.
For the school to be required to do it.
Jeff, as you're looking forward, there's a section just on River Road, just below North Ethford Road, that's an issue and may cause problems in the next year or two years from now. The south end of River Road would not affect you because that could be easily bypassed.
Yeah, with the, with the new, because of that new cut?
No, because the south from Hanover north, the gravel portion. There's gonna have to be done at some point. But that shouldn't affect the school bus, because you walk there and back. What is gonna affect it is there's a section along the dirt section, just, uh, south of, um, John, John House, maybe five years, maybe ten years, maybe fifteen years, but it's gonna go. There's a big erosion area there, um, that is gonna be prohibitive. And I think when it gets to the point where it threatens the road, it's gonna be the end of River Road. Because I don't think the town's gonna be able to afford it.
So maybe we should just, no, we should, we should sell River Road to Vermont. Maybe Vermont will buy River Road.
They have the benefit of the river, if not, that's all. Negative versions or anything, you know.
Well, just so long as you can hold off on that road until I retire, that's, this next River Road thing has gotta be after.
I guess from, I think it makes sense probably to buy them. Personally.
I think it makes sense, but I have a question regarding the responsibility to the school versus the impact to the town or from the responsibility of the town as well, because I know where the small rural schools grant is, has gone in the past, and just seeing the impact that it will have, not having that in the school budget, is there any place the town can, can cover some of this because it's caused by the roads unless by?
I, I don't wanna speak for the town, but the town is, isn't, is as tight as, as we are. Um, and, um, you know, we, we have access to this grant. Um, I would think that if we got to a place where we're like, oh, man, we would've done this had we still had the ten thousand dollars from the rural schools grant, maybe we could go to line foundation, maybe we could go to community members and say, look, we had to expend the money for this van, we'd really like to be able to do this, is this something you can support? Um, I think if, if we, you know, um, I think if we, we put it on the town, um, they would, that would just go right back to taxes, and, and I think we're gonna be paying for it one way or the other. And, and let's be honest, the grant money isn't coming from, like, the ferries who create money. It's been raised through federal taxes and things like that, but, so we, we pay for it in that sense too. But I don't know, if, if the town, if, if the select board thinks they had some money scrolled away, I, I think that would be wonderful.
Let me think, I think the last discussion we had was, we were looking for a little pile of that magic money ourselves.
Yes, I think you probably were.
Or a little bit of an overrun on the river, right? Good things, a little project that's occurring at the moment. But I would like to say, I mean, it's maybe not appropriate, but I think this is terrific, I thank you for extending the invitation to the Budget Committee, most importantly, in select meeting, to sit here and have this discussion because you're absolutely right, it's, it's the same pocket that feeds both the town and the school, and it shouldn't be a competition, it should be cooperation.
Do we have any additional discussion? Hearing none, I will call a question, so all in favor of expending up to thirty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a van? Do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstain, motion carries.
Can I ask for a question of clarity?
Sure.
Who was allowed to vote? School board.
School board, yeah.
You have no warrant agenda, so.
I mean, if you wanna vote, you're, you're about to protest.
Clarifying.
But I, I would, I would like to get a sense, so we're having this, we're, we're trying to have this conversation in public, and obviously, we, we'd like people to understand that we're trying to do this in a very open, um, and, um, inviting way. Do people think that this is, uh, ill-conceived and irresponsible?
There are times you have to cough up the money for something and you have no choice, and it's money that you haven't programmed. I remember in my Coast Guard year when we grounded all the aircraft because we ran out of fuel money with forty days left in the fiscal year, and there was a big stint about that.
Chris?
Between the twenty-four and six incrementally, it's a tenth of your, a one-tenth to one percent of your budget. Pretty sure, short term, the school should be able to find that within the budget. And then longer term, we talk about it when we have normal budget meetings and town meetings, and I think there are a lot of alternatives.
I wanna make sure everyone has an opportunity to, to share their ideas, because if there are ideas, I'd hate to hear them later, uh, and, and, and after we've made a decision, but love to hear, make sure we hear them tonight. Even, and if you disagree, please say so. Sue?
There's only one thing, the question that I have in my mind is the necessity, necessity to go to the van that you're proposing and a regular minivan that can carry eight passengers.
So.
I know this, is it a hard and fast rule that you have to have a middle aisle?
It's only six kids.
No, you can get in a van, you can get eight.
Somebody, if they're not of a certain age, can't sit in the front, certain age or weight, basically, so the front seat's probably out for most, for most kids.
So there are, there are those things, but I think that the biggest, the biggest difference, the biggest reason between going to a minivan and a, uh, commercial van has to do with utilization and the ability for that vehicle to be used for more purposes than a singular purpose. Uh, for the, for the chances of it being used, uh, for a closure that incorporates more households than fewer households. So I think, and, and the difference between a, um, minivan and a van, um, I think when we were looking at it, well, actually, I don't have the answer because we could buy, oh, there are more used ones on the market, but, um, what I'd be afraid of is that we suddenly would have this smaller vehicle that we couldn't utilize for the variety of different tasks that we could if it was slightly larger.
And didn't you also say that, maybe, and wouldn't actually meet our needs right now?
Right now, uh, we have to do it in two runs.
Well, you also have a commercial grade versus.
Commercial versus, uh, car chassis versus truck chassis. Uh, raised height versus not raised height, uh, center, uh, egress versus.
How about access in terms of, um, wheelchair or things like that?
We don't even, we're not even.
You don't even go there.
Well, I wouldn't, no, I mean, if we wanna double the price of it, I might ask them about it.
But we can't, I mean, legally, it just popped into my head, legally, we can do it without having that access. We would just have to make sure we gave special access if there was a kid on the roof.
If we had a student with multi-handicap, we had to transport them, we'd be buying a specific vehicle for that kid.
For that kid.
And we would have, we wouldn't have this conversation. Because that was already litigated by the state, by multiple states multiple times, and I'm just glad we don't.
Again.
No, buddy?
Earl?
Rationalization, when you're buying one thing or the other, that's fine. But when you start trying to find out reasons and excuses, and possibly we will be needing it and we could use it for something else, those things should all be, just, they should not be in your figuring.
Yep.
They really shouldn't, because you're now getting emotions and, and trying to find a reason to do something other than getting the kids, bringing them to school.
Right, so let me just make it perfectly clear. Uh, I do not have any emotion in this other than dread of the fact that now, as superintendent, I'm responsible for a vehicle and I have to find a driver.
That's fine.
And, uh, if you take a look at my vehicles, you'll see how much I really hate vehicles.
No, no, I appreciate that, that's fine, stay to the, stick to that, you'll be fine.
Yep.
Trying to dream up other uses for it.
No, no, all I'm trying to.
Don't get in that.
Yeah, so all I'm trying to say is, because I can't promise anything other than, uh, what it's gonna be used for, all I can say is that what, what's the difference between going with a minivan versus a commercial van? And I think we've had that conversation, but that's my rationale. But, and I have no idea if there's other uses for it, I'm not gonna promise any other uses for it. All I'm gonna promise is that people solve the problem that we know exists today.
I think also, just in the search, or if, um, if it would perhaps be worth, they're not saying what, what Jen thought, and just making sure that since it will be covered by the insurance that we have under our, um, as a rider, that we're clear on the restraint rules and whatever size vehicle it is that we, we choose and.
And there may be, like, we may have to get, like, lights and, lights and things. The insurance company will tell us if there's any modifications we need to do to the vehicle, the one we leased, we didn't.
But because this is something that the purchasing and it's all under insurance, I think that would be.
I think New Hampshire has slightly different rules around that, but I, I'm not gonna attest to know that for sure. But that will be something we have to research, I think it's a good suggestion.
And as well, I think that just if we did another quick search for anything that's possibly not brand-new off the lot, I mean, I understand our time constraints, but it would just be a big, um, a good idea to be able to do this for that as well.
Um, I can, I can put out more feelers. The fascinating thing is, I had no idea that, but the car deal, like, if you're buying the same, if you're buying from the same model car, all, they all know what cars are out there, and they know exactly what they're gonna cost them, and so when I was doing this, he said, oh, is it this vehicle that you got a quote on? And he literally read me the VIN number of the guy's bid, I was like, oh, this is just creepy. Um, and so I, that's, I started with a search on, on, um, these vehicles used, and what I was told is that there weren't any. Now, one could pop up tomorrow, again, I'll tell you is what I know right now, this is what I know right now. I've spoken to more car dealerships than. They didn't do a car dealers, no, 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 uh, no, no, no offense, but. People are creepy. Any other, any other contributions so we can feel like we've made a good strategic decision?
Cardigan mountain or gateway, have any surplus vehicles?
I honestly didn't call them. I honestly didn't call them. Okay, so we have one additional item, business that we would like to add to our agenda, which is a signature of our DOE 25, which is the school financial report, which was audited by the end of last week, correct? It's very important, it's a very important.
And the MS 25 as well, there's two of them.
Okay.
And the report is actually attached to the signature page.
Okay. Go ahead, one up then.
Sure.
Thank you. Second?
Sorry.
Any objection? Okay, that item is added to our agenda, our first item of business 6A, replace River Road bus. Without objection, we're going to table the consent of the minutes, the public minutes and non-public minutes from June 18th. Thank you, everybody. Yes, thank you. You're welcome to say for the best. Thank you, welcome. Thanks, Chris. I got a caller. Okay. Oh, I didn't mean, okay. Thank you. So, that brings us to Board Chair Report.
Yes.
And my chair report is basically going to be subsumed by our business. So, the only additional item that we can discuss is that Jeff and I did meet regarding the devaluation in, when was that? Early July? Yeah, July?
July sometime.
And we can discuss, you know, what we talked about, what we didn't talk about. I think it was a good discussion. I don't know if there's much that we didn't talk about. Yeah, no, I think it was thorough. And, I mean, if we wanna go into non-public at the end of the meeting and discuss that, we can, we can do that and leave it up to the board.
I think in the policy that we had, or the procedure that we originally put forward, we were gonna discuss it in non-public and then have some sort of, either at the retreat or after, some sort of explanation in conference session, is that correct?
Yeah.
Like, some sort of, just, just a brief summary in conversation?
Yeah, so, I think that the goal is that Johnson's gonna write a letter and based upon that, develop, I'm gonna develop like, you know, goals for the coming year. And so, you know, I, I look forward to kind of share those because, you know, how, out of that, I'm gonna prioritize some things. And, you know, you guys might say, hey, look, I'm glad you really wanna work on this, but we think you should probably focus on this other thing. Or, you know, as things come up, like, we didn't anticipate the bus coming up, but it subsumes a fair amount of time. So, you know, those conversations, what faces, what challenges are facing the school should always influence, you know, that, those prioritizations or priorities.
And we have those built-in check-ins that hopefully start this year to support that process?
Yep.
Okay. And readjust the goals throughout the year.
Yep. Okay, so that's all I have for my Board Chair Report and we'll take the finance report. Janet?
Okay, so, I sent out the end of the year last year. And I just wanted to add a couple more reports, so I sent the...
Jeff, do you mind just, I, I do want, I just want to acknowledge the fact that, as you may or may not know, we, we just got finished with the audit process every year as long public schools are audited.
Did you guys like?
And we've completed that audit process. It requires a great deal of Janet's time and Nancy's time. And I, I would just like to formally recognize Janet for her hard work with the auditors and getting everything done, so let's give Janet a hand. That's... You noticed that she was, that whole time, trying to keep everyone distracted because you're probably just embarrassed that I'm embarrassing her face?
So, I added a couple reports, so you have the trust fund balance report, that is an audit figure, so it gives you in the final column, all the actual balances, it ends up at 230 in our trust funds. We do have management fees that are in the third column over, fourth column, and those don't come out until we get the statement from charter trusts. That has been, it goes in the last time I reported about. So, maybe any questions on the trust funds? The second paper I gave you is the line of school student activity accounts and their beginning and ending balances and the activities of deposits and withdrawals throughout the year and our petty cash checking accounts. It's at the bottom. The drama club was closed this year. If you remember, that checking account was shut down and the drama funds were put into a contribution line. So, maybe any questions on the student activity accounts?
You also know that the principal's fund, we're gonna be having to retire that until, we have to move it over to a 501(c)(3). Yes!
Thank you.
That will be done over the course of this year. We will not be able to transfer the funds that are in that line to that, to that 501(c)(3). Right, so what we had discussed doing with the auditor, which is, you mind if I talk about this? Please, yeah. So, we, we do have the authority to move those ones because they are municipal funds out of the principal's fund into another operating line item. And so, when we're ready to, to phase that out, that's what we'll do. And then...
Can you say anything?
Yeah, so, when we, when we spoke to the auditor, the, we're gonna set an amount that we wanna keep for petty cash purposes. We're gonna transfer that amount into what is the petty cash checking and that would be a maintained balance. And then the, anything beyond that, we would transfer to a fund that had a similar purpose, something like hot lunch scholarships or something of that, that has a similar purpose. And then close that principal's fund on the school operations so that it can become part of the, will be, will be the name for the one that exists in the 501(c)(3).
Okay, thanks for going.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I was just gonna talk about the audit a little bit. They did ask different...
Yeah, I was gonna ask the time.
Yep.
But just what they were dropping at K6, the 7,000, 4,000, 6,000.
So, it's a combination of a lot of different things, so if, within that account, there's every classroom, kindergarten up through sixth grade has their own separate accounting.
Yep.
Plus, there's a, a small amount of money in a music fund, there's also a yearbook fund, and there's a...
A picture.
So, they're all contained within that K through 6 account. That total of all of the accounts, in all of the accounts, it's not just the...
So, not just the class accounts, but all those other...
Right, it's, it's everything.
Oh, those aren't just the, the grade K through 6 classes?
Yeah, because that's a good question, why would, why would any class K through 6 be withdrawing funds from it?
Until eighth grade where you can see the 30,000.
Well, they do do some little things, like the sixth grade went on a trip as well and they took some money out of that.
They did?
Yeah. Yeah, I can't remember what class, what trip it is.
The Boston trip, it was a hundred and thirty or fifty dollars to parents to go.
Oh, and there, that may be, that it's in cover all there, I'm not sure.
Just good to know for some, because when they do the fundraising, fundraising for the class, the answer typically just for the, just for the eighth grade trip. So, it'd be good to know if it is for Boston as well, because then those, those classes would know, like, to have more by sixth grade.
Because I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't think that...
So, check is written out of that.
And then it's, then it gets reimbursed. Okay.
So, I may have said it, like...
It becomes neutralized.
Yeah.
So, check may come out there and then it gets reimbursed by the money going in. Okay.
All right.
Oh, that would actually make sense because 7,000 whatever came out and then 9,800, 9,918, $18 went in.
Yeah, but that could be the fund same. And 9,918 could be the, the midnight.
Yep.
So, does this really help with the...
So, I'm just gonna talk about the audit just a little bit. There were some adjustments during the audit period. So, the audit went pretty smoothly, it was a little bit different from last year, they were asking different questions. They do random testing, so they're looking at purchase orders and, you know, receivables and payroll and, so there's just a lot of different random testing that they do. I know they have a strategy, but we don't know what it is, it's pretty random. One of the things they did do is I actually had to have an interview and have an explanation of why we were over or under in certain categories in the budget. So, I was very pleased that I kept my budget from last year because if you go back and look, what the strategy was at the beginning and then show them what our actual expenditures were in that category and what had changed. So, that was, that was different, I've never had that question ever before in any of the audits that we've been through. Despite our best efforts, we will still have a finding in purchase orders, even though we increased our purchase orders by a million fold this year, we still are within a certain percentage range that we will still have a finding, although it's better than it was before. So, adjustments that the auditors made, one was in commodities, which our commodities, originally I reported were $400, that report came to me from the state and it was incorrect. So, our actual commodities were $4,472.52. So, when that money went in, it changed our transfer into food service from $17,000 to $21,000. So, the, you know, there were adjustments in those ways. We also had a security deposit that was sitting in our assets, that was left over from when the SAU was in the building down the street. And in order to get that off our books, we took it out of other local revenue, so we could get that off the books because it's been sitting there for a long time. The other things that were adjusted was student lunch balances. So, we have accounts that were delinquent, accounts that have money sitting in them and items, yeah, with balances owed to students, to the eighth grade students and, so with all those adjustments, there's a little bit, and I'll explain it, but I just wanted to talk about that, so I'll show you where that shows up on the expenditure page. So, if you go to the bottom line on the expenditure page, there's a little bit of a difference between our projected balance and what we actually end up with. And that's why I wanted to mention those adjustments, because they will not show up on an expenditure report, they're balance sheet adjustments. So, our revenues didn't change a lot except for other local revenue. Our expenditures for last year, the items that we were really under, we came in way under expenditures, our high school special ed came in under $134,000 and regular elementary special ed. Elementary special ed came in $69,000 on the budget.
So, and the logical reason for those are because we had students that we anticipated we have in our district that required specific services and either those students didn't, didn't continue in our district or the services that were required for those students changed. And so, when we budget for special ed costs, we budget on what we currently have, you know, in the fall when we're building a budget. And then over the course of the next year, if conditions change, that's changing. And the good news is that it, it changed to our benefit as opposed to, to our, what would you call that?
Detriment.
Detriment. So, well, that's good, even after a couple months, that's good, that's good. Old married couple.
So, we were over budget in regular instruction and building, buildings and grounds, those are the items that you know. And then if you go to the second page, you can see that over without the transfer of funds, we had a positive, we were under budget 28, 686. So, we had our revenue surplus, our expenditure surplus, and then we have an F projected surplus and then our purchase orders, which would have given us a positive fund balance of 223, 923. Fund balance on June 30th, and this is audited and I've got the wrong date in here, it was supposed to be 19, 630, 19. Restricted funds are $55,945.8 and unrestricted, $220,878.70. Committed to trust for FY '20 is $45,000 and we also have prepaid expenditures which need to come out of there for $4,375.56. So, our unrestricted fund balance is $171,503.14.
So, that amount is going to be used to reduce taxes this coming December. And we're going to be looking this year, we're already, you know, looking at not this year's budget, but the following year's budget, we're gonna have to walk ourselves out of that by, gradually by returning money in surplus to town less than the 178 in sequential years. But the nice thing is that our ability to reduce costs, the, the fact that we were fortunate in how special ed played out, is gonna help us keep our taxes lower, which is a good thing.
So, just pass that with this year's...
What's that? Reserve fund for quick discussion. Yep. So, one item that I'd just like to raise, as we were brainstorming on how we could deal with this unanticipated expenditure related to the van, is that when you have a fund balance, you can't commit any of it, it must be returned to the taxpayer unless town meeting has authorized a contingency reserve fund by statute, it can be up to... I thought you were saying, if I can leave now, it means maybe by stopping.
Didn't stop, hit this one here. I can't, go ahead. Turn it off.